Joe and Joe should be switching places. What I will do is I will have you both, all three of you, four of you at the same time.
Oh.
Just go down the line. I change your name.
Hi, Joe Abugonam.
Hi, Louise Michael.
Danielle Trumbull.
I, Brian Butcher.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, and the Charter of the City of Morgantown, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Council Member for the First Ward, Joe Abugonam, for the Third Ward, Louise Michael, for the Fifth Ward, Danielle Trumbull, and for the Seventh Ward, Brian Butcher. To the best of my skill and judgment, so help me God. Let's have you guys come inside.
This is for your new...
Well, I know, but didn't he already took an oath? He had to take another one?
Yeah.
Yeah, one for...
The council one.
We're not gonna let him out of it.
Congratulations, Danielle. Congratulations, Brian. Congratulations, Louise. Congratulations.
Thank you. She can stand up front here for a photo?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That what your families can take a photo of?
Yes. Yes.
Did you get pictures with your families? Did you guys get, did you get pictures with your families?
Uh, no, yeah.
Okay. So, let's, um, ask the deputy clerk to please call the roll. Sorry. Let's see here. Bill Kueke?
Here.
Louise Michael?
Here.
Jenny Celine?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshberger?
I am here, but I'm gonna drop off at this point. Thank you all very much for letting me phone in. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Brian Butcher?
Here.
And Joe Abugonam?
Present.
All right. We're all gonna start and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So now we have, um, the approval of minutes, um, June 21st, regular meeting minutes. We'll approve them by acclamation unless someone has something that they'd like to, mention? All right, by acclamation? Okay. Correspondence, public hearings. An ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget of the City of Morgantown is shown...
I had, I had correspondence.
Oh, well.
You brushed right over it. It's addressed...
Correspondence.
It's addressed to Daniel Trumbull in City Council, but I think that's me. I won't, I received this letter via the city. I picked it up yesterday and I won't read the entire thing. It's from a constituent who had some concerns about some things she witnessed in the downtown on Monday evening, several different incidents, and talking about her discomfort going to the Met Theater, how dirty the sidewalks are, and requesting, um, an allocation, or requesting a report of the allocation of money that has, um, that the city has collected for years while the city is going to pot with no signs of improvement. So, I have that. I will make a copy and send to everyone.
Yeah, hopefully there's something we can do. All right. Is there any other correspondence? Pardon me skipping that part. All right, I'm gonna go back to, "An ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget of the City of Morgantown is shown in the revised budget attached here too and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the coal severance fund." So this is like our second, second reading. Um, so we're gonna have a public hearing just on this topic? Anyone wishing to speak just on this coal severance fund topic? All right, we're gonna close that. Now we're on to, um, same item, unfinished business. Consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget of the City of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached here too and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the coal severance fund. The first reading was 6/21/2023. So, um, let's see, Kim?
Thank you, Mayor.
Our manager, pardon me. Pardon the first name.
Thank you, Mayor. We, uh, our finance director wanted to be with us tonight and was ill today. And, uh, this, this particular, um, ordinance and this budget revision is the same as was presented at the last regular council meeting that council was part of and Mr. Tennant made a formal approval. But just, just a quick reminder, at the end of every fiscal year, there's, there's some unallocated funds that usually crop up and need to be allocated by City Council. Uh, this year it's in the amount of $59,800. Uh, the proposal is to increase Parks and Recreation Budget by $53,820 and contingencies by $5,980. And that's, that's what this, uh, this budget revision reflects.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Anyone need a motion?
Move to approve.
On a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions, or we will ask clerk to call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Abugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Louise Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
And Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Boards and Commissions. We have a few items here.
Madam Mayor? Yes. I'd like to nominate Alice Ian to Boards and Boundary Commission.
Okay. Acclamation?
Do you need to check in?
Yes, thank you. And by acclamation? Yep, all right. Now?
I wish to nominate Sarah Barnes to the Ward and Boundaries Commission as well as the Sister Cities Commission. Does that need to be two different nominations, or...
Yeah. Two different nominations?
Okay. So first I wish to nominate Sarah Barnes to the Ward and Boundaries Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, on favor, by acclamation, okay?
Then I wish to nominate Sarah Barnes to the Sister Cities Commission.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, by acclamation, all right. We have another here on a different matter, but... Oh, is it not on the, uh... Well, is there not a... No, I guess it probably is on the agenda.
I thought it was on the agenda. If it's, uh, Mayor, I would like to...
Isn't it on there?
I thought there was an agenda item, but I'm happy to, happy to do it now.
D.
There is. It's item D under new business.
Thank you. All right, we are not gonna worry about that right now. Thank you very much, everyone. Here we go. Um, now we're to the public portion. We're gonna open this public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And you would come up and you would speak your name and, um, and your address. And... All right? You're good.
Were you going before me? Oh, I don't know what that is. Okay. Hi, how are you? Uh, my name's Mary Ann Foles. Um, I live at 828 Bloody Run Road. I am not an ax murderer. Um, it is actually outside the city of Morgantown, but it is, I am a line county resident. Um, I grew up here, moved away for work, moved back within the last year. Uh, could've lived anywhere I wanted, and I chose to come back here. Um, I have seen things improve and I've seen things go downhill. Um, I've seen other cities where I lived, I lived in a suburb of Cincinnati. I've seen a town go from literally a cow path to having the largest high school in the state of Ohio. And it's done really, really well. And I've seen things here and I'm like, you know, we could be doing better. We really can. And so, I'm gonna run for county commission next year against, you know, the God of this town. Uh, we all know who he is. Um, and I'm hoping that I'll be working with all of you. Um, I have extreme passion for this town. I love it. It's why I came back. Um, now, I have a lot of ideas. Some of them, a lot of people aren't gonna like. Um, but I'm hoping that everyone will be willing to listen. I'm hoping that everyone will be willing to keep an open mind. And, um, one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about tonight is very similar to the person that you got a correspondence from. What's going on downtown? This relates specifically to this organization more than any other set of people on the planet. You know, you guys are the ones who control that. Um, and I'll tell you, I was downtown on Saturday. I went to the farmer's market, had a great time, drove around High Street, and they were about to do arts walk. I was gonna go. And there was a man out there waving his arms. I didn't know what was going on, but I'm like, I'm not getting out and walking downtown with this. There's no police around. It, I didn't feel safe even downtown in the middle of the day. And this is something that, as an organization, the people in this room have to fix. I mean, you just have to. And I've got some low-hanging fruit ideas that I'd like to present tonight. And this is very short because I don't have enough time on my parking meter to talk long. Uh, so, number one, the number one thing this county needs, I mean, this town, uh, at City Council needs to do this year, we've got a new, new, uh, year just started tonight. Uh, the number one thing is you gotta fix the first responder issue. Um, I see that as the absolute most important thing you do this year. You've got to improve your relationship with the, the police and the firefighters, and you can drop this, I mean, settle this lawsuit this month. There's no reason you can't do it other than you just don't want to. But it's the most important thing you do to try to get law enforcement back operating on your side and on the side of all of the residents of downtown in the next, in the next year. Um, I think you need to reach out. I think you need to be doing, um, first responder appreciation events. I think you need to be bringing the public and the police and the firefighters together to meet each other and develop a community. I'll speak quickly. I understand, I understand. Uh, second thing, the ambassadors, where are they? I don't know. They should be helping with, um, with graffiti removal. They should be helping with cleaning up downtown. It shouldn't be Danielle walking around cleaning up the city. We've got people hired to do it. Put those folks to work. And if you're not gonna put them to work, let's just end that and spend the money somewhere else. Um, and then number three is enforcement. I, I think I texted you a little bit, or you saw some notes I mentioned on, "We need cameras downtown." Low-hanging fruit. If you all don't know how to get someone to hang some cameras, call me and I'll call an electrician and we'll get people to hang cameras downtown so that the police can catch the folks who are doing things they shouldn't be doing. Um, those are my, you know, those are my, my biggest gripes with the town, coming back to it from having been gone for 35 years. I'd like to see downtown become vibrant, become, um, a place where I'm not afraid to walk downtown, where other people wanna go.
It's definitely past the time.
I'm going, I'm done. Anyway, I'd love to meet you all at a different time. We can get into more details, but, um, uh, I'm, I'm hoping you listen and, and take that to, really to heart and fix these things this year. Thank you.
Todd Stainbrook?
Todd Stainbrook, 1035 Bakers Ridge Road, Morgantown. I had a whole speech written and then we got to see all the stuff that went on, but, um, truly not a good day for the City of Morgantown. You know, in the hearts of the constituents, your constituents, in the hearts of you, Mr. Kueke, and you, Mrs. Celine, you all know that the best counselor was not elected mayor today. The best counselor was not elected deputy mayor today. And it really, it... People vote you in to do positive things for this city, to get positive results. One of the first things you can do is get a mayor and a deputy mayor who actually produces results. And you didn't do that. You've got to be retiring and moving out of town, Mr. Kueke, 'cause you nominated them both. You've gotta be leaving town. You gotta not care what happens to the city with who you nominated again. The reason for me speaking tonight has nothing to do with the city councilors, or has everything to do with city council's unwillingness to revoke the city manager's contract as well as the lack of communication between counselors and management. Four people stood up here as counselors and took an oath to follow the charter. Follow the charter. Again, we've had this conversation before. The man does not reside in the City of Morgantown. Your new contract that you gave him after you found out he didn't reside in the City of Morgantown, as though you didn't know that in the first place, um, states that he must spend the majority of his time in the City of Morgantown. And again, we all know, he does not do that. You have the ability to revoke his contract immediately, and that's exactly what you should do. You have people now on this council that will pay attention to what goes on, will speak up within justices. You might as well get it done and be done. Mr. Haas doesn't have the ability to manage a paper bag, and we're allowing him to manage a freaking city. He doesn't have to deal with the crisis that goes on downtown 'cause he's not here. Doesn't matter to him. Why are you rolling your eyes? I mean, he does not live here the majority of the time. Period. I'm happy to congratulate, congratulate the newest members on City Council. I'm sure you guys will do well. It is my hope that all City Council members will start working together with each other for the betterment of the city. I know we have a couple that will be working very hard. Well, a couple of others will need to wake up and educate themselves on what the hell they're doing here. Be supportive of each other and start doing what is right. The blind eye that the city's been laying under is now wide open. And people will not be silenced, nor should they be, ever. Thank you for your time.
All right. Anne Cronin-Yorick?
You. I'm Annie Cronin-Yorick. I live in the Seventh Ward, have done for a year and a half now, Pocahontas Avenue. Number, I'm keeping to myself. Um, I have to apologize in advance. I have no ad hominem attacks to make today. I have no directives to tell you what to do. However, I need to talk about my garbage, my recycling. Mr. Butcher, my councilman, has had to hear about it quite a bit. Pretty much every week. Republics had to hear about it every day because I called them every day and said, "It's been three weeks since you picked up my recycling. When are you going to do that?" Well, we talked to the driver and, uh, he said, "No bed on your side. Stick treat even recycles." So they don't go there anymore. That is not true. They come at four in the morning. I know 'cause that's when I go to bed and take pictures of them. And they park in front of my house and collect all the neighbors' recycling and trash, and they leave mine for me. They haven't met me, so they don't know, they hate me yet, I don't think. Maybe the word got out. Um, I watched the city council meetings and attended some when contracts were being talked about, and when Republic representatives got up here and promised the sun and the moon and how wonderful things would be, and that we're all gonna do new trash containers so they could put them on their truck and just dump it in and be done with it. And I've learned in the course of my daily phone calls, most of the Republic trucks are not equipped with those arms to pick up the containers. So they're picking out little bags of kitchen garbage when they do collect mine and throwing it in the back of the truck and leaving stuff at the bottom of the barrel. So, my cat litter's been there for a month. It doesn't smell good. It's been getting either, but it's worse. Recycling, they'll pick up the trash sometimes, but there's several crews. So I called about recycling. We're going to have a local number, people. You get the national number, no matter what number you call. You can call a number on the bin. You can pick one out of the air. You get the national number. And you talked to somebody in Memphis, or more recently, Tuxen. I talked to someone in Tuxen. I think he may have been south of Tuxen, is what he said, yes. So, each time I was promised, we were going to send out a note. We're going to call. We'll let them know, and they'll at least come by tomorrow to get it. I have Friday pickup. They don't come by. Last week I called. It's been three weeks, and they didn't pick it up. Oh, I say last week, I mean, two weeks ago. We'll have them come by on Thursday, get the recycling. Fantastic, 'cause I've got a house full and I can fill up the bin and have it out there for Friday, too. Okay, so they'll be there Thursday and Friday. Perfect. They picked it up this morning. So that's five weeks, I think, that we've had these same containers recycling. We got our new trash bin, which is nine gallons, which is a lot more trash than we put out. We use more recycling than we do trash. And you can't buy a bin liner for that. And since they don't have the arm to dump the trash into their trucks, mine stays in my bin. We're not getting our money's worth. Can we work on this? Please? Thank you. Any questions? I kept track of my calls and me, who I talked to, anybody who wants them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Close that. We're under new business. Consideration of approval of the first reading. Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending section 13290401 as it relates to establishing a new firearms, new firearm sales establishment's use in the planning and zoning code. Uh, and this would be Ricky. Our planner, pardon.
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
I get first names and I'm not being professional, pardon.
That's all right. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Haas, uh, thanks for giving me an opportunity to address you on the zoning text amendment regarding the establishment of a new firearm sales establishment use in the city's planning and zoning code. As you are aware, the application for the new proposed use was submitted by Protect Morgantown, and after review and as reported in your packet, the Municipal Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation to council to approve the zoning text amendment ordinance before you. The proposed new use would be permitted by conditional use in a B2 service business district and by right in a B5 shopping center district. In doing so, three sections of the city's planning and zoning code would need to be modified. They include section 1329, table 1331.0501, and table 13650401 regarding the minimum off-street parking requirements for said use. Uh, just like take this opportunity to thank the members of the planning commission for all the time and effort they put into reviewing the zoning text amendment application and their further deliberations throughout the process. The city is very fortunate to have such a great group of dedicated citizen planners on that board. There were several meetings. Counselor Trumbull had been a part of all of those deliberations, two workshops, lots of discussion. So I just really appreciate all the time and effort they put into getting us to this point regarding this matter. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion.
I motion.
To prove, yeah, and...
Second.
Second, thank you. So, do we have any questions about this?
The current businesses are all grandfathered in, is that...
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Apparently it's foregone, 'cause we don't have any other questions.
I must've done a very good job explaining it, it kind of our last meeting.
Was there any, was there any other things that you felt like came up from these meetings?
I think I went over everything. I can give, for Counselor Michael's, um, benefit, I can very briefly, the planning commission, this was brought to us, and we looked at many different iterations. If we restricted sales based on proximity to a school, church, place of gathering, if we restricted based on zone alone, we went back and forth, looked at the different maps, had several work sessions, as Director Jaeger said. Um, this does, this is in line with our land use table that we already have. We regulate a lot of things that, um, most people probably don't even know that we regulate. I, like, where you can have a fast food restaurant... Like where you can have a fast food restaurant, where you can have a greenhouse, where you can have a pet sitter. These things are all spelled out in our land use table. So this is simply adding a line to that. And there are other municipalities in the state that have done things very similar. And I think that what we came up with makes a lot of sense for us specifically here in Morgantown.
Any other questions or concerns? Nicely explained. And if the clerk would please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Louise Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of the twenty twenty-three paving list. This must be, it's been engineered and it's, I mean, it's been bid out.
Good evening.
Yes.
Yes, as.
This is our city engineer.
Paving bid went out finally. We had a bit of a delay this year getting it out. We made a lot of changes to some of the documents, had lots of questions from the contractors as we bid it out. So we finally got it bid out. We had two contractors that bid on the project, Prada Paving and Anderson Excavating. Both contractors have done the majority of the paving over the last six to ten years. Have been those two contractors. Both are well qualified to do the work. This year's paving project, a little over nine miles of roadway paving, a little over half a mile of the rail trails being paved. I think we have thirty-five ADA ramps we'll be doing as part of that as well. And I think fifteen different traffic calming measures. Speed humps, we're going to try something a little different this year from the speed humps to help accommodate the fire vehicles and buses that traverse those areas. So overall, Prada was the low bidder, one point seven million. And anybody has any questions? Answer them.
Mayor? You came quickly over the speed hump modification. I'd like to hear a little more about that.
So we're going to be trying instead of speed humps, they're called speed cushions. Speed cushions, yeah.
It's a new one.
Yeah. They're similar to speed hump except that they have a path through them that accommodates the wheelbase of a fire truck or a bus. Where it doesn't quite accommodate a vehicle, so this, you know, personal passenger vehicle still traverses it like a speed hump where a fire truck can hit those gaps and go through it without having to to hit the actual speed hump and slow them down. So we're going to give them a try this year, see how they work, see how the fire department will work with them when we're installing and make sure they work for their apparatuses.
All our trucks have the same wheelbase?
Mostly, yeah, like the ladders, the rescue trucks all have roughly like a eight-foot, nine-foot wheelbase in there. And so this will accommodate those where a regular car, passenger car is like a six-foot wheelbase. Doesn't quite.
Are we also making allowances for bicycle traffic?
They could, they could use that gap in those as well.
Usually that's next to the curb.
No, it'll be out in the roadway. So there'll be accommodations for drainage at the curb line. But in the center of the lane will be for the vehicles.
These are still things we're doing on our own or?
Yes. No, no state routes.
And do we, you have? I'm curious, I'd like to see it as it happens. Is there a place that this will first be done that I might?
Yeah, as we get the schedule out and we do these, I'll invite you out.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Let's be sure we have a motion here.
We do.
Good.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
What was the budgeted amount for the paving plan and does this come in?
One point eight and this comes in at one point seven. Yeah.
So we can get another street?
Maybe, we'll see. We always tend to, the last couple of years, we've done a pretty decent job estimating and have had a little extra and we've been able to add some streets at the end.
Anything else? Appreciate all that attention to detail, yeah.
Some of these are highlighted in red on our paving plan, is there a reason, is that for?
No idea.
Okay.
My print is in black and white, so.
Yeah, some of it, it's just like random stuff is red. I didn't know if there was a specific reason.
I'm not sure, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that version.
Okay.
New secret code.
Yeah. I printed in black and white to save the city money.
Way to go. Couple extra pennies for paving.
Just don't print it.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Thank you.
If the clerk would call the roll, thank you.
Did we get a motion?
Apparently we did.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. We didn't, we did.
A second.
That might have been the one before, I don't know, but now we are really well, we are really well seconded and firsted. So if you would, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Louise Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. And now we're on to consideration of approval of a fair and festival permit for Chris Jansen concert at Hazel Ruby McQueen Park Amphitheater. And Dr. City Manager, to tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Ruski Entertainment in cooperation with John Chad Incorporated are requesting sponsorship for a fairs and festival permit from the West Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Administration for an event that's going to occur in July, actually July twenty-seventh from five PM to eleven PM at the amphitheater, Ruby Amphitheater, where they will be serving non-intoxicating beer. And this is for the Chris Jansen concert. Council has approved twice previously this same sponsorship letter. And in talking to our illustrious director of these events, he thinks that these folks do a great job and have been very cooperative and actually contribute to some revenue sources for the city on top of them. So it's our recommendation that this be approved.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you.
On the letter, it says occurring from July the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, so can we just?
Do you like question?
Yeah.
July twenty-seventh, yeah.
Correct that before we. But other than that.
Anybody have any other questions and we can call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Louise Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of a new city seal. Sure did. Consideration of approval of a representative to the West Virginia First Foundation Regional Director Election. Now it's my time.
Mayor, I would.
It's your turn.
I would move to appoint Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham as the City of Morgantown Representative to the West Virginia First Foundation Regional Meeting.
Second.
I imagine there's not too much discussion, we could.
Maybe we could just explain what this is.
Do you want to explain what this is? You probably know as well as anyone.
I suppose so. The county, well, the state was awarded opioid settlements due to a lawsuit for damages claimed in that lawsuit. Won that lawsuit and then they formed a nonprofit called West Virginia First Foundation to distribute those funds. There's six regions in the state that have been assigned, we're region four, pretty sure. And we have thirteen counties, get the numbers right, that are part of that region that will appoint members to that foundation's board. The governor will appoint seven of them himself and then six of these we get to kind of decide. And then I guess the votes, I don't know what the weighting looks like, but I guess the votes are weighted out by the amount that people got. Not people, but municipalities and entities got in terms of the funds for that determination of the director that will sit on the board. And I guess what we're voting on today is just to have Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham go in our stead to vote for one of the directors for our region, which is a meeting that is convened by the County Commission. And that is only for attorney, what portion of that funds? It's like, what percentage, like twenty?
The foundation itself?
The funds that they, that, yes, the foundation will be deciding on. Is that all, is that the seventy-four percent?
That's correct.
Okay.
The foundation itself will receive, I think, seventy-two point five percent of the total opioid settlement funds. And then it has target amounts that it will disperse to the regional groups to administer each year as well.
And then, but we as a municipality will be getting some amount of funds as well?
That's correct. All participating municipalities and counties have a specific distribution based on the schedule attached to the West Virginia First memorandum. Each of those are much smaller in comparison to the funds that will be administered by the foundation. But all are limited to the same purposes related to addressing opioid-related problems.
Thank you. That's thoroughly confusing, so.
That's a good explanation, though. We are sending our representative to choose.
To choose a representative.
To vote, to choose a representative. With people from thirteen other counties.
Yeah, to be thoroughly bureaucratic.
We're good. All right, does anybody have any other questions? So luck of chance.
Educated vote.
All right. So I guess the clerk could call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Louise Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously.
If you please, chair, really quickly. It is on the thirteenth at ten AM, I believe that meeting is open to the public, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so in these chambers, so if anyone would like to go.
No, it's not.
No, it's in Mylan.
Oh, it's in Mylan, that's right, it's in Mylan, yes, thank you.
So now the next item is consideration of a new city seal, which is kind of an exciting thing. And I think we would ask our Assistant Manager, Emily Moserelli.
So the, in front of you is the proposed new seal for the City of Morgantown. It corresponds with our updated logo that we will be working on branding. Our existing seal did not have the logo or this lovely woman that you see behind us. It was simply had Morgantown, West Virginia on it. So we wanted to keep in the history kind of of the original seal that we do have, incorporate the new logo and really be more consistent in our branding. And so the city clerk could probably provide more accurate details of when exactly the seal is used as opposed to a logo. I know we've got some stamps in the little embossers and things like that. But in general, this is in consideration for council to approve as prescribed in the charter.
Okay.
And there is a color version and a black and white version depending on what you are, what method you are using to affix the seal.
So for instance, that's one of them.
That is the black and white seal, yes.
Somebody have one of the other ones?
It's the old one.
It says, I can describe it for everyone. This is the old one, the City of Morgantown around the outside, State of West Virginia in the middle with a star.
And this is the new one and it goes in line with our new logo, which you can see in the center. Okay.
Move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I would just like to point out, the old logo was not included in the city seal and I think it's very classic and timeless and I prefer the old one as the seal. So I'm, just want to, it's nothing against the new logo. It's the classic seal that I am voting for.
And I'm probably going to vote for the new one because what the heck, it's the new one. So.
Did the, did the old one always have these teeth on the edges?
Mm-hmm, I believe so.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't have the teeth.
Doesn't always, it's just kind of like, sometimes it's the stickers.
That's just the sticker, yeah.
Like the foil sticker. That's what's always stuck to the documents.
Yeah.
The city clerk's office has the official. Like stamp and embossing machine and it's not nearly as fancy as the golden sticker seals that get put on things.
A little nostalgia you're having.
Well, we still have golden stickers.
But this, but let me, okay, maybe I need to clarify then. If we change this, the new golden sticker, sticker seal thing will look like that, not this, for our official documents.
That's my, that's my question as well.
Because I like this for official documents.
We would probably have some version if council were to move to update the seal as with most things that we're going through with the branding process and updating to the new logo. We would probably have a very similar thing that looks like this, but on some type of golden sticker that probably usually has little fancy edges and things like that. So I would say, because that's more or less, it's, it's, it's embossed, so you can usually feel it. And so it would be very similar to merging the two together. So you could probably still have golden foil stickers with.
With that on it.
Teeth edge, but in the middle, it would have the circular logo instead of the one that says the City of Morgantown, State of West Virginia in the middle. But that will be a process as we go through in a fiscal, fiscally responsible manner to update those.
All right. So. Any other questions or concerns?
Not a question or concern, if you could, just for statement purposes, because you talked about fiscal. It was well under budget, is that what you said?
Yes, we had originally budgeted about a hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in this year's budget to do that. But many of the things, just as, for branding purposes, as we've gone through this, the logo was fully designed in-house by our communications and marketing staff. Our Public Works has a printer that is able to do banners, vehicle decals. So it's really more the cost of the paper as opposed to sending it out to a company that does vehicle wraps or something along those lines. And historically, you know, people would get things like the really nice paper letterhead and we've moved more away from that kind of stuff where it's more of a PDF with a digital letterhead. So that type of things have little to no cost.
I just wanted to make it knowledgeable, like public knowledge that we were able to save money initially compared to.
All right. If you would call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Louise Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
No.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes. Passes minus one. Let's see, consideration, presentation discussion of standards and options for rail trail lighting. And we have Ella Belling from MRTC.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. I'm Ella Belling, the executive director for the Mon River Trails Conservancy. And, um, I'm here to, um, have a discussion and, and talk to you a little bit about the, um, package that you should have received, um, had some different designs for rail trail lighting. Um, and I'm gonna skip right to the last page.
Last page.
Uh, if you're looking at this design, we are Mon River Trails Conservancy Board of Directors, um, along with Main Street Morgantown and the Mills Group, has come up with this proposed lighting for the Wharf District, which is, um, the area where we have a current grant, um, to fund a section of the rail trail for lighting. Um, and we'd also like to make the proposal that the city consider this recommendation, move it forward, and set a consistent design standard for any further lighting that may be installed on the rail trail, so that we have one consistent look. Um, this would go into play as, um, I think Sunnyside Up and Greenmont Neighborhood Association and others are discussing ways to light sections of trail. Um, so that's my first recommendation. Um, it is different from, what is it, Hazel Ruby McQuain Park? It is different from what is the entrance way to the Clay Street area right now. Um, this was chosen as something that could be, um, kind of a transition, um, that would make a consistent look, um, going forward. And, um, since we are looking at a much longer linear, yeah, uh, section of corridor, uh, to consider, we would like to try to set a standard for it. Um, it is downlighting. It is, um, equivalent to the amount of lighting that you would see at Hazel Ruby McQuain Park. Um, and, um, my understanding is that, and this still has to be determined, but that we would still have approximately the same amount of funding for, um, this type of lighting that we have for the other. So, I think that it'd be an equivalent price as well, but that's something that the engineers will be working out. And if there's any add-ons to this design, such as, um, electrical plugs at the base, um, so that you can plug in for power, that's an additional charge, um, additional cost. So, um, so that's what I'm here to talk to you tonight. I'm not sure that anybody can respond to what I'm saying, but, um, I just would like to kind of set a stage for us to continue this discussion and move forward with it. Um, and then additionally, I would like for us to, um, have next steps for having an agreement between the Mon River Trails Conservancy and the city of Morgantown for operations and maintenance of those lights. Um, it is on city property and, um, and it would be, um, probably hooked into the electrical grid of the city. It's my understanding.
So, can you tell us a little bit about where this has been? Uh, what groups it's into?
Yeah, so, so, um, this was a proposal from the Mills Group when I started going to their, um, design committees um, for the comprehensive plans for Morgantown. Um, we started talking about consistent lighting for the city as well as the trail. Um, and, and this was something that they brought forth and was agreed upon with, um, the Main Street Committee, uh, this evening, earlier today. Um, and tomorrow I'll be, um, taking it to Sunnyside Up for consideration as well. Any questions?
So, let's, uh, well, we're not gonna have a motion exactly. We're gonna have a discussion. So this is, um, presentation discussion of these standards and options. So there are three on the back here, so if people have questions that they would like to ask, please do. Yes, please.
Says it has sixteen million color variations? Is that the right, am I looking at the right one?
No, um, no. So, we're only recommending the middle option.
Okay.
So, these two on the sides, we're eliminating.
Which appears to have one color.
Yes.
Makes it a lot easier.
Yes.
A lot easier.
Not nearly as exciting. And if you look at the beginning of this package, you'll see that there's all kinds of different lighting in the city of Morgantown. This is trying to con- condense that option for the rail trail.
Yeah, at the Main Street meeting earlier this week, he said, or I guess it was last week, guess how many different types of lighting are in downtown Morgantown? And we were all like, I don't know, four? He was like, nine. And I was like, no way. But now that you're showing, I'm like, oh yeah, all those are down here, okay. I do love consistency. You'll have my support on consistency.
So would this proposal replace a lot of what we have already established, or is it just for the rail trail, right?
No, it's just for the rail trail.
Just a standard design for the rail trail.
Right. I, I will say, Main, uh, I think the Main Street Design Committee is considering some for some of the streetscape, same design, but I'm not sure of that, so I'm not gonna speak to that.
So they were explaining that this is kind of like transition lighting, so, as you said, so it's, it's kind of meant to match and blend with all those nine kinds on the front as best as possible. And kind of look a little historic, they said, and a little modern, both. Which, it's pretty amazing in one light, you can show a little history and a little modern. Um, but I think, I think it actually does, so it's kind of cool.
No, no, a lot of what we have right now is very old, and it's not going to last forever. So, having something to work towards as we have to switch over to new lighting, knowing what we're getting and not having to look again, we need to have consistency, yeah?
You, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you might want to explain exactly what we have funds for currently and where these will initially be applied?
Certainly, yes. Um, so, we have a recreational trail grant, a federal-funded grant, that thankfully the city of Morgantown is providing the twenty percent match towards. That, that funding will, um, provide lighting from the Wharf parking garage to the Marriott Conference Center. Um, so just the stretch through the, through the Wharf District. Not taking us all the way to the dam and not, it's just to be lit on the land side, not the riverside, so that you're not obstructing any views or crossing for, um, lighting, wiring. And I, my understanding is they would be about every sixty to eighty feet, making allowances for where there's already, uh, property or lighting through that section.
And then, Sunnyside Up has a plan. I don't know if it has a light attached to it, but they have a plan, but they do not have funding for it at this point. So it might be good, once we have this, to kind of try to put those together and get funding for that.
Right, additional grants, yes, right.
And that would be more towards Seneca Center. Does anyone have any else? Um, so, you're good if we just kind of say, this looks like a really good plan in the middle here, and we don't necessarily vote on it.
Yes.
Have familiarized ourselves with it.
Let me move, yes. Let me continue the conversation with a feeling like we're in support, I guess. Yes, consensus. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
City managers' report.
Uh, Mayor, I don't have anything.
Outside of, I, I think for the benefit of, of, uh, Pastor Michaels and just as a reminder that there is a project management tool that our administrative staff, uh, updated last week. Again, they, they updated every, before every council meeting. Uh, it certainly has, has most of the projects, if there are projects you want to see included, let us know and we will include them and, and get updates. But, the project management tool will allow council to see what's happening around the city and, and updated, uh, comments from those who are responsible for those, uh, for those projects. And that's, that's all I have to report tonight.
Can I ask a question about that, logistically?
Um, each of the different tabs on that, maybe I'm missing updates. Because I go through the tabs and I look at the last updated, and a lot of it still says December. So, I assume there's no new updates for me to go down and search for.
Yeah.
Are they updating that? The lineup here?
I think it's the fourth, it's the fourth column. It has a little triangle in the top, a little colored triangle. If you hover over it.
So like, here's our tool, like, right here, it has a last updated, so as I click on each of the different tabs down there.
Yeah, he's saying, see that little triangle?
See that little triangle right there? If you hover over that, it gives you all the updates.
Okay.
It'll tell you when the edit was made.
Okay. I scroll through here periodically, and if some of them say that they were updated very recently, like, the airport one says last updated, seven, ten, twenty-three, and I'm like, okay, Jonathan made an update. I'm gonna look for it.
Exactly.
But, if.
I think people might not realize that was up there.
Okay.
'Cause as someone who's frequently updates that spreadsheet, I don't think I've ever updated, maybe that's on at the very top.
Well, and you and I have recently had a conversation about this, and I'm like, no one's ever updating it.
Yeah.
It is a Google form and it shows histories of updates. I don't know if you just took that out to be less confusing.
It did something happen, who knows? Apparently I have some reading to do.
We've done a few things.
I said, no one ever updates that.
City Attorney says twelve, twelve. Got it. Alright.
I'm glad we found that.
Report from the city clerk.
Um, I would just like to congratulate, uh, Mayor Celine on another term as mayor. And congratulate, um, Deputy Mayor Abu Gonham for the deputy mayor. Um, I also would like to announce that the police civil service will be holding, um, entry-level testing on Saturday, October twenty-eighth at nine AM. Um, if you would like to apply, um, you can either get on our website at www.morgantownwv.gov, or if you would like to call our office, um, we could email an application. Um, and you can reach us at two eight four seven four three nine. And that's it.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Councilman Michael.
Congratulations to all the council members beginning your term, so I'm looking forward to working and continuing to work with you. Um, I attended a National League of Cities webinar today, providing a Supreme Court update from the last term focused on, uh, how the, the decisions from this term affect local government. They always put on a, a high-quality program. They will send a recording of that that I can share if anybody is interested. There are several major decisions by the court, as many people probably know, and, and some of those do affect, or potentially affect municipal operations. So we will try to identify those and, and keep up to date on them as we move forward. We are, uh, we are continuing to work on the private outdoor designated areas option from the newly enacted state law. Main Street is taking the lead on scheduling a, a follow-up meeting with, uh, some, uh, some area bar owners to talk about how we can try to get some guidance from the Alcohol Beverage Control Administration on, uh, on some of the provisions respecting licensing within the law. And see if that is, um, something that's workable for them to participate in moving forward. So, keep council updated as we, as we try to work on that. And, uh, that is everything I have tonight.
Thank you. Report from council members. Why don't we start here with Congress? Sorry.
No, just kidding. Uh, so, uh, as far as like events that are going on that I'd like to bring attention to, on July thirteenth, we'll have a Suncrest Neighborhood Meeting. Um, will also be, uh, I guess, a dedication of, um, Tora Park now that the kids got to put in their, uh, little houses, um, and stuff. So, also be a cookout that's at six PM, July thirteenth, at Suncrest Benny Park, um, in the Seventh Ward. Um, and July twenty-second at four PM at the Mount near Mall, um, there will be the first annual Travis Murray Memorial Car Show, um, to honor Travis Murray. Grew up on, uh, Summer School Road. Um, he was, uh, good friends with, um, my in-laws and my wife. So, um, those that can attend, that would be great. Um, I wanted to speak a little bit about, um, the problems with Republic. Um, are we able to talk about your most recent communication as far as Republic? Kim, do you think publicly, or?
I, I think so.
Okay. Well, I, I would just, you know, wanna say that I appreciate, um, Kim taking some, some action to find Republic as far as their early morning trash pickup. Um, you know, uh, I think that's, uh, an issue that, like I, I've said many times, I don't necessarily experience right on my street, but some people apparently do in my ward. And, uh, do, do in the, um, in, uh, the Fifth Ward as well. And, um, so, uh, I, I, I do think, um, I have heard a lot about the trash issue. Um, and so, uh, and, um, as our, uh, speaker tonight, uh, has able to get like quite a bit of information, honestly, as far as like what people, I've relayed a lot of that to you guys, but like, to what people are hearing on the phone, which is vastly different, and like we had spoken about before, um, with the, um, where they're telling people directly over the phone that our contract with them is, you know, for an earlier pickup that's not there, which like, leads me to believe that the workers themselves believe that they should be out there collecting trash at that time. Um, because that apparently isn't being communicated within the company. So, that's all useful information, and I appreciate it. Um, as well as the apparent lack of arms in the trucks to actually get the trash cans that they've, uh, had touted before. Um, and, you know, I still have a lot of people reporting, um, that they have not gotten their smaller cans. A couple have. Some people haven't even gotten cans still. Um, and, uh, you know, there, it seems like there's always like a going Facebook thread about what's going on with the cans. So if we could, uh, try to resolve that kind of debacle as soon as we can, that'd be great. I don't think we need to be worried about, at least, this shouldn't be something consuming our time, right? Is, we're wondering about, uh, why we can't get trash cans to people, or the right-sized trash cans to people. Um, I met with Mayor and Finance, um, last week to talk about, um, a potential wage theft ordinance. And we kind of talked about their concerns with, um, that ordinance, and I thought that went really well. It was like, less than twenty minutes or something, which is surprising for a government meeting. And they, honestly, I think they had some, some great ideas and like concerns, brought them up, and we thought they were good ideas, and that was kind of the end of the meeting. So that was very productive and nice to, to have a government meeting that doesn't last two hours. Um, some of the planning, I think, is, is ramping up for shelter this winter. Um, uh, Councilwoman Trumbull, if you have any updates for that that you'd like to share, that'd be great. But, um, as far as like hotel planning, that stuff is coming along, and if we need to coordinate, um, be happy to. Um, and I think that would conclude. Oh, well, um, also, congratulations, Wheeze. Thank you for sitting here with us and suffering through us. And I appreciate you being here, um, but, uh, yeah, thank you. concludes my report.
I had a report prepared, which I usually don't, but now I have several things to follow up on. City Attorney Simonton. Do you know if Huntington has already established their POTA? Are they operational?
The ordinance has been adopted. The last update I have is as of about a week and a half ago. They had, um, two applications in, but no licenses granted.
Okay. Did the ABCA ever put up the application for?
I'm not sure if ABCA has published the, uh, the S four license application or not.
Okay. I'll follow up with you to talk about an upcoming meeting, because we need to do that.
Great.
To follow.
To follow up with Counselor Butcher's comments about the city manager's action, I would like to thank the manager for, I have been sending pictures for four or six weeks and at the last, at least the last two city council meetings, I have complained of early pickups in my ward and that of other wards. And this morning I sent, I have started sending pictures from my security camera. And I tried to go through Carol Allen in the manager's office and we tried to go through Republic representatives and escalation of hierarchy and nothing was being done. So this morning I did formally, I sent this week's picture and last week's picture and formally requested that a fine be imposed. And the manager did that today and I'm very grateful, I think that's the first one ever. So, I don't know if it'll send a message or if we'll have to continue doing that, but I am grateful that we were willing to take some action on that. Because I feel like we have been trying in good faith to resolve some of these issues with them and it, it has seemed ineffective. Yeah, to also follow up, I do have an update from MCR. It was discussed at the last Hazel's House of Hope Advisory Committee meeting, that they would like to be giving me and Commissioner Arnett updates to share with the public at our meetings. And she sent me kind of an in-depth one, I'll just go over a few highlights about things happening at Hazel's House of Hope throughout the month of June. Morgantown Community Resources hosted a free CPR and AED certification class in coordination with the Cheat Lake Volunteer Fire Department. Fifteen people were able to be certified that morning and the three city ambassadors took part in that. In June, we also did our open house, which we had a hundred and fifty to two hundred people come through and that was a, a great event for us. We've, we've had a lot of community support since that. The United Way would like everyone to know that in June, they gave out just under fifty thousand dollars of food to local pantries in Monongalia and Preston County, which equates to feeding about eighteen hundred families. The Salvation Army reached a very high number in June, they were able to serve over twenty-five hundred meals out of the Hope Cafe. They also have partnered with the city on a food box giveaway and at the first Saturday giveaway, they gave to seventy-five boxes out. And they are currently ramping up their social media and looking to expand upon that at the next giveaway, which I think is like this weekend or next weekend, it's coming up soon. She didn't give me that. Lauren's Wish would like to announce that they have placed their two-hundredth client with, they have a very impressive ninety-eight percent placement record of folks coming through their facility, they have great long-term follow-up. And Lauren's Wish is being, being very instrumental in fighting some of the substance use disorders happening in the community.
Placement into permanent supportive counseling or?
Different people go different places, some people go to rehab, some go to a longer-term kind of, yeah.
Just some kind of program?
Yes, to some other program. And they even welcome people back, if someone goes to rehab and comes out and has no place to go, they will welcome them back into their facility and help them find another place and keep them in that supportive environment until they can find another location for them to go. And the last thing from the update that she sent was that we are soon beginning renovations on the fourth floor of Hazel's House of Hope, where Aspire will be moving in. Aspire is a housing program that targets veterans and plans to offer services for substance use disorders, job-related support, things like that. They are also currently working with clients of Lauren's Wish and Salvation Army, getting people placed into sober living and getting job training and job placements, things like that. So things are being, we have a lot of people moving through the facility for sure. Counselor Butcher asked about the warming shelter and I was actually asked to talk about that very briefly. Assistant City Manager Emily Mozzarelli and I met with another MCR board member yesterday to discuss the, as we all know, the city has set aside some money for this upcoming year and the county commission has set aside an amount of money for this upcoming year. At this time, MCR has hosted two different meetings of different social services, talking about what a warming shelter would look like this year. As everyone knows, it's gonna look different than it looked last year. No organization has stepped up willing to run that as of this time, we, we have no, no one. So, it is my understanding that the county commission is either being asked or has been asked to call a meeting of maybe some social services, all of the municipalities. This is not just a Morgantown problem regardless of what those around us would like us to think. So we are going to try to escalate that a little from an MCR meeting to a county meeting, trying to get more voices in the room to see what the plan is. Because as of right now, I mean, it's not October, usually we're having this conversation in October, we did start it in April, but no organization has stepped up willing to run that. Just a couple of upcoming events, the Moonlight Market at the Farmer's Market Pavilion will be this Saturday, July fifteenth in the evening. The Woodburn Association of Neighbors is meeting at seven PM at the Woodburn Community Complex on the nineteenth, that's next Wednesday. Bow Park's Jazz on the Green, part of the Sounds of Summer Concert Series will take place at Jack Roberts Park, the evening of July twentieth. And don't forget about the Friday night concerts throughout the rest of the season down at the amphitheater. The last one was the, by far, I ran into the mayor there, that was by far the biggest event I have seen at that amphitheater. So, lots of stuff going on, my son got his face painted, everyone was excited.
ABBA this time.
ABBA, yes, the Soul Miners, which is apparently a local favorite.
Yes, my favorite.
And Mania, an ABBA tribute band, will be this Friday, so sure I'll see a lot of people there. The last thing I wanted to talk about was, I mentioned during my statement earlier, the election and our changing city with our ever-changing needs. During this last election, myself and every other candidate was asked a ton of questions about our current style of government, the way in which we run our elections, our election dates, more. I for one, and as always, stand by the statements that I made during the campaign and I am willing to have those conversations, I am willing to start those conversations. So I think it is time for us as a council to form a charter review subcommittee and evaluate the needs of our community as it is currently and as it is modernly and talk about what the people expect from us and the people want to see us do. I've talked to councilors from other municipalities, not only in West Virginia but elsewhere. And periodically, the charter gets reviewed, maybe we make changes, maybe we don't. But I think it's time to have that conversation and discuss our election dates and I would respectfully ask to be included on that initiative.
I think we should have that discussion and we should look at what the goal was out of it so that we kind of began with whatever the end was in mind. So you're saying election dates.
I think that people have asked a lot of questions about things that are spelled out in the charter. And I, I'm hesitant to give too many options right now, like just, people have asked if the mayor should be elected or a full-time mayor. People have asked if we need to continue, if we need to move our election dates in line with a larger election. People have asked if we should go back to single ward representation. I'm not saying I am for or against any of those things, I'm saying that during the campaign, I can, I mean, I was there when you, me, you, and we were all asked. That was the number one question that was brought up and tonight starts a new council term and I think it's time to have the conversation, it's time to open it up. Alright, you brought it up, thank you.
First off, I just wanna say that I'm happy to be here and I, I realize I have a lot to learn. And for my third ward, I'm, I've got a few things already in motion, some new signage, which I should hopefully hear by next week. And I'm going to be joining with Mayor Celine on the twenty-sixth this month to look at some of our alleyways. And so I have some really good ideas for my ward and I, I can't wait to get started, to be honest with you. So, anyway, and then I was, would like to request an executive session at our next meeting so we could maybe discuss some personnel issues. Is that okay? And that's all I have.
Yep, I'm gonna talk to other council people and we're gonna figure it out, yes.
Very good. Well, if anybody's available on Thursday night, or at seven o'clock, the South Park Association of Neighbors is sponsoring a casual walk, learning about trees in our neighborhood in care, estimated time is approximately thirty to forty-five minutes. They ask you to wear comfortable shoes, the guest speaker is Thomas Pawal and he's the West Virginia Department of Agriculture Plant Industry Division something or other coordinator. Program coordinator. So that's available. Other than that, interesting to start, to start another session of council, we'll see how we go. Thank you, that's it.
Alright. I guess let me start.
Welcome. Thanks, Jeff. Welcome, welcome.
Uh, I have, I told the MHS Foundation I would announce that they have their annual five K coming up. Uh, they're trying to raise funds to remodel the auditorium in the historic Morgantown High School. That five K is August twelfth and it is twenty dollars to register. Uh, if you register early, you get a free tee-shirt. If you follow me on social media, I'll have the link posted. I was also going to add, I guess I'll reiterate Thursday, July twentieth, is Jazz on the Green at Jack Roberts Park.
Sorry, Bow Park versus first ward here.
Listen, it's one of my, it's actually one of my favorite events mainly because I get to watch from my front doorstep, so.
Uh, as long as nobody blocks my view.
Last year, he sent me a picture of myself there.
Yes. Well, to be fair, I was telling you to move to the left, cause I couldn't see. Uh, the next neighborhood meeting is September twenty-fifth at Jack Roberts Park at six PM. I couldn't be there at the last meeting, so let me also express my gratitude to Counselor Trumbull for stepping in my place and being there. And I also would like to reiterate Counselor Butcher's frustrations with Republic. I'm hoping, I saw some message, some posts of people finally receiving smaller bins. I am upset to hear that some people are still being asked for a doctor's note. But outside of that, I feel like there is some headway being made and for that I am grateful. Outside of that, that is my report.
We may need another trash meeting. And.
That's not a descriptor.
No, we're not trash in the meeting, we're just having a meeting about regarding trash. And appreciate, appreciate the initiative to start living fines. And I think one thing that people can remember that helps, I hope, you to get the correct information is to use the trash can number, phone number and other numbers on the trash can are supposed to get you more to local. Try it.
She says no. You can't see her.
She's saying no.
Sorry, Annie. I almost moved inside of your house, so maybe I'll have to ambush or something, I don't know. Ambush the trash people, not you. So, let's see. We have something fun here, there's this big blue box. So apparently, when people joined the twelfth, they decided that they were gonna send us some stuff. So all of a sudden, City Hall, we got this big box, look. And part of the reason that I'm showing this off to everyone is, at some point in our lives, we should or our university should have a similar large box to send when we want to really impress people who are going to be visiting our city. So, we're not sure about what the bite is out of the corner, but, but we, what is it? It's the O in Provo or it's a bite from the cougar tail. We got a cougar tail in here, which is not in here because it's a donut that maybe has maple on it and it got a little stale. So, we're not, we're not worrying about that. But, this is wonderful, we got really nice, really nice letter. We got these beautiful postcards, which are in a very nice style, but actually were styled by, in part by our communications manager, which is kind of cool. That's where I used to live. But anyway, they have a nice thing about building a successful team in city, they have a nice little map of recreation things that are going on. Of course, there's something about Provo City's game plan and homegrown in Provo. So, they have also things from different companies. Chocolate? Anyway, I just thought it was really nice that they bothered to do that, send it to us. And so I thought it was nice if we showed it off and we will send them something back appreciative. So, thank you all. And that's the end of, and thank you to our clerk who got it all back in the box, once it was all out all over the place. So I appreciate everyone here and their willingness to serve. Counselor Abigonum becoming the deputy mayor, I really appreciate and I appreciate everyone else and all of the hard work that you do. And we each make our own lovely competi, lovely contributions and I appreciate it all. And now we are heading toward an executive session. Do you want to?
I move the pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A four two nine, we enter executive session to discuss acquisition or development of real estate in the third ward tax district.
Second.
Thank you. Favor, yes. So we're gonna head to the back.